All right, let's give it up for Mr. Canon Golden. And Canon is a kindergarten student at Salas Mahone Elementary School where Ms. Brantley is his teacher. And he said that the subject he enjoys the most in school is writing and that's really, really awesome. And so I asked Canon, I said, what do you want to be when you grow up? And Canon said he really wants to be a football player. So Ms. Dowan and our football folks here, you know, I told him he's in good company. And that we would definitely nurture his career here at Valdosta City Schools. So thank you, Canon, for bringing the meeting to order. And since this is Christmas, we do have a little gift for you to take home. All right. And so that way, just thank you for your service. So let's give it up one more time. All right. So and who did you bring here with you tonight?
My dad and my mom.
Oh, okay. So let's give it up to the family. Thank you for allowing us to pour into your son. And we appreciate your services as well. So thank y'all and you got the little ones with you. So if y'all need to step out, we do understand. So thank you.
So I'm just gonna piggyback off Mr. Canon and call the Valdosta Board of Education Regular Meeting, December the 17th, 2024, 6:00 PM to order. At this time, we'll have invocation by Ms. Brown.
Our heads, please. Father God, we thank you for meeting us here on this evening. We thank you, Lord God, for how you have brought us through this day unhurt and unharmed. Thank you, Lord God, for what you're about to do in this meeting. We do pray for your guidance and your direction in every discussion that we have, every decision that we make, and every action that we approve, that it will be for the best interest of every child in our school system. I pray that you bless everyone who is in attendance and that your will prevail over our will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, hello, hello. Welcome, everyone that's here face to face with us and also those that will be watching us YouTube live. At this time, I would like to have an approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? May I have a... May I have a... May I have approval of the minutes October the 22nd, 2024? Any discussion? All in favor? Please make note to review the minutes from November the 12th, 2024. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Witherspoon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members and Dr. Lockhart. Tonight, we are honored to recognize Ms. Samantha Prime as our Valdosta City Schools 3V Champion of the Month for the month of December. Ms. Prime has been a dedicated custodian at Pineville Elementary for two years. She embodies the very essence of exceptional service and commitment. VCS Director of Custodians, Ms. Greta Smith, describes Ms. Prime as "a humble and quietly exceptional team member who consistently goes above and beyond." Without hesitation, she willingly stays late to support staff and takes immense pride in her work, consistently demonstrating remarkable teamwork and dedication. Pineville Elementary's Principal, Mr. Birdman, further highlights Ms. Prime's outstanding contributions. He notes that she is consistently punctual, never complains, and maintains the school's entire campus both inside and outside with meticulous care. In recognition of her exceptional performance, Ms. Prime was previously named Pineville Elementary's Employee of the Month earlier this year. Here to celebrate this recognition with her tonight is, I think, Ms. Sanjay Willis. I don't know if she was able to make it tonight, head custodian of Pineville. I see Mr. Tony Birdman, Principal of Pineville, and Ms. Warrenie Lewis, Assistant Principal of Pineville. We are proud to congratulate with Ms. Samantha Prime as our Valdosta City Schools 3V Champion of the Month for the month of December. So at this time, please help me in congratulating her. And Ms. Prime, if you would make your way to the front. This is for you. And this is for you.
Thank you.
Dr. Witherspoon, we have her take a picture with the board chair. Ms. Steely, if you... No, don't move. Hold on, Ms. Prime, you're walking off too fast. Let's get a picture with the Pineville staff with her, if you don't mind. And Dr. Witherspoon, if you don't mind, just standing there with her as well. Thank you for your service.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Lockhart. It is my privilege to introduce the talented individuals of Cohort Two of our Aspiring Leaders Program to the Board of Education. This dynamic cohort represents a diverse array of talent, experience, and passion for student success. Each member has been carefully selected based on their demonstrated leadership potential, dedication to professional growth, and commitment to foster excellence in education. Their development aligns with our vision of cultivating a pipeline of innovative and effective leaders who will sustain and advance the mission of Valdosta City Schools. So I'm gonna start with Salas Mahone, Wilford Lewis, Valdosta Middle School, Courtney Allen, Saeel Burgland, and Jamal Hunter, WGN, Oscar Lee, Mubram Middle, Gary Moore. Just to realize that Valdosta High School is twice as big as some of the other schools, so don't treat me. Okay, Coach Shelton Felton. Coach Marcus Dowen. Coach Jeff Golden. Coach Sandy Turner. And Alex Robinson. JL Lomax, Jacqueline McCasky. Pineville Elementary, Tamika Stewart. And Warwick Lewis. And last but not least, Essel Mesa, Mr. Gregory Vaughn. And Ms. Alicia Clements. I present to you Cohort Two of Aspiring Leaders Academy. Dr. Lockhart and I decided that... And they were given... We went around to each school and gave them certificates and invited them to the academy. We were... We talked at the beginning of the year and we said that we really didn't need to do another academy, but he promoted almost 80% of my first academy. So we needed to rebuild the academy. So I present to you Academy Two.
Let's give it up for this group of... Thank you all for your service.
So we had individual pictures, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we have, that is true.
If I may, Madam Chair, members of the board, we want to thank again Dr. Richardson for her leadership of the academy. The academy actually has received national acclaim and people are actually calling us trying to see what this recipe looks like. So again, we're really grateful for all of the service here.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to BSU.
Thank you. Hi, Madam Chairwoman, Board. It's great to be here. My name is David Sleikeis. I am the husband of Julie Sleikeis, who is an outstanding educator at JL Lomax here in the city. I also happen to be the Dean of the College of Education and Human Services over at Valdosta State. Thrilled to be here and be able to provide some updates on what's going on in partnership between Valdosta City and Valdosta State. So... You gave that to me. Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, we started an internship program with you all, which has been fantastic. And it got off the ground last spring. Last spring, we had 23 of our teacher candidates who applied to be into this intern program. We vetted 14 of those candidates saying, we think these 14 candidates are ready to go into a school and be a teacher of record and be able to be paid during their clinical practice, during their student teaching. 10 of those 14 got a position. The majority of those got a position here in Valdosta City Schools. And it was really, this partnership and this whole program only got off the ground because... because of working with Valdosta City Schools and putting all these parameters together on how we were going to vet these candidates, how we were going to get them into the classroom, and how we were going to get them paid during their student teaching. Makes a huge impact on the students. We really encourage students not to have a job during clinical practice, and so if they can get paid, it's a major boon to them, as student teaching can really be a hardship during that semester. This past fall, we had a panel for our teacher candidates on campus that four school districts were invited to, including Valdosta City Schools. They came into our teacher candidates, they talked about what it's like to be at the schools, sold their school districts a little bit, you know, talked about everything that's going on, and really gave our folks really that firsthand knowledge of what it's like to be out in the schools. We had, as part of our partnership with Branch Ed, which is our formal partnership between the city schools and Valdosta State, we had Branch Ed, which is the organization that we're, that is funding that. They came in and they did a professional development workshop for Valdosta State faculty, for our faculty, on inclusive instruction. Because we really want to get our faculty up to speed on inclusive instruction, so that they know what they're talking about when they talk to their teacher candidates. So when our teacher candidates get in your schools, they are ready for the situations that they are going to walk into. As part of the grant, also, we worked on our key assessments. We have a variety of key assessments that we have to give all of our candidates as they march through the program. And working through the grant, working with your staff, your teachers, your administrators, we've been revising those to make sure that they really address all students and the diverse populations that our candidates are meeting. Coming up in February, the Valdosta City Schools, some of your staff that do de-escalation, your trainers are coming to our campus, and they're going to lead a workshop on de-escalation strategies for our teacher candidates. Looking forward to that. As part of the grant, also, we are looking at really building that pipeline. We want to build that pipeline of future teachers. And you already have it at the high school, through the grant, they're talking about moving down to middle school, and looking at pushing it down all the way to fourth grade. You can't get somebody excited to teach too early. I was at, up in Atlanta, testifying at a committee a while back, and heard a horribly depressing stat that only about 30 to 40% of teachers would actually recommend to their students to go into the profession. And that is something that we really need to work on. We got to, we have to keep teachers positive about the profession. Otherwise, we're never going to get that next generation of teachers in the classroom. One of the things that we do is, obviously, we do our traditional teacher prep for the 18 to 22-year-olds who are on campus. But we also have lots of master's programs, and we are working right now with the city schools to create a cohort in our master's programs that would be for Valdosta City Schools only. Possibly taught either here on your campuses or on our campus, but it would be a face-to-face, a group of cohorts that would be tailor-made, really. We would take our typical master's programs, tailor it to what's happening here in Valdosta City Schools, and move forward with that. That is part of our effort that we are doing to educate, to get, to produce educators for all schools. One of the things that we're really excited about, starting actually this summer, it says Fall '25, actually started in the summer of '25, we are going to add to our MAT Library and MAT in elementary education. So that means we'll have an MAT, which is a Master's in Art of Teaching, which is for initial certification for people who have a bachelor's degree. This is often utilized by people who are in the classroom but don't have that certification yet. So they are, you know, they're on a probationary license, they need to get their teaching license. This is the frequent way that people get that. We will now be able to certify teachers across 33 different fields through our MAT. This is a fully online program. It is set up to be a summer, fall, spring, summer, that we get students through, get teachers through, in essentially a big year to get them through. So we're excited about bringing elementary education. That was the big glaring hole in sort of our portfolio that we have there. So we hope that you, along with others in the state, can take advantage of that. We started in 2021 in an online bachelor's elementary education program. Many students from, many of our students in that program are from Valdosta City Schools. This has become crazy popular, to the point where we're having almost a hard time keeping up with demand. Just giving you an idea, in the fall of 2021, let me get these numbers correct. I think we had 35 teachers in that program. This fall, we have 475 teachers in that program. So it's been great as far as teaching the online classes. When we're getting to the point of trying to place them in their field experiences and their clinical practices, we're finding that's where our challenges are with such large numbers. But, but we will take that challenge so that we can get all those students through. Again, online education programs between our MATs, which are fully online, we have some masters which are fully online, that bachelor's, which is fully online, they have all gone up drastically in the last couple of years. Our online MATs, which we just added that elementary education to, is, those are up 187 students in the last three years. Our Department of Teacher Education, where all of our initial certification and many of our graduate programs are housed, is up 566 students over the last two years. That growth really is almost entirely in the online side and working adults who are coming back and want to get certified. I also want to mention, we have the Sullivan Literacy Center, which is in the Education Center on campus. That center, if you're not familiar with it, students come on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think it was this fall. And our students who are in a methods class about teaching reading, they work with the students, they do tutoring, and all of that on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoon. It's been wildly successful in the Sullivan Literacy Center, so we're adding math to that. So we're going to do both literacy tutoring and math tutoring in the afternoons on campus. So we're excited to add that to it. That's the majority of what I wanted to present to you, just quick updates about what's going on. I can't say enough about how pleased I am with the partnership between Valdosta State and Valdosta City. It is great to have a partner right here in our backyard. I mean, literally, when I come over here, most of the time, I walk from my office. It is, we're so close that it is imperative that we work together. And I think we're doing a great job of that. Whenever we can collaborate, if you have something that you need a partner with, a higher ed partner, please reach out. We would be excited to do that. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention one more important fact. On Saturday, the undefeated Valdosta State football team is playing in the national championship at 2:00. There are going to be some watch parties around town, so I hope that you can get there and cheer them on as they go for their, another national championship. And with that, go Blazers! And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question though.
Sure.
Can you tell me more about the MAT program you have for the master's program? For the, only for Valdosta City?
Yeah, so we're discussing that right now. So what our goal is, it's essentially that online MAT that we have. We're basically going to take that but do it face-to-face with Valdosta City School teachers. It may be a little bit of hybrid, some face-to-face, some online, but we're trying to figure that out right now and find a way to tailor it so that, you know, the examples that we use and the assignments are really specific to Valdosta City Schools.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I just want to thank Dean Sleikeis, his entire team for this partnership. We're very fortunate and blessed. Most places just don't have this sort of partnership. And so we're really excited to thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Casilla.
Good evening, Board, Madam Chair, Dr. Lockhart. We will start with the cash flow report tonight. For the month of November, our payroll expenditures were about $3.4 million. Operating expenditures, $5.3, for a total of $8,781,819. The Guardian Bank account still has a little bit of money left in it, $53,957. And I think we have almost finished all those projects at the hospital. Close, so that should be gone soon. Revenue, $5,093,000 for QBE revenues. And if you look, the tax revenue did start going up in the month of November to $4,523,000. We did receive another $4 million check yesterday. The tax bills went out about a month late, so we kind of expected our revenues to be a little bit behind. Our cash accounts, we have $23 million in the GIP and 1.7 at first date due to, we did start getting tax collections in, and our grants, most of them have started to draw down, so we were able to move money back to GIP and have a little bit more up there. The 2015 bond revenue, $579,000. $540 of that is what we moved out of SPOS 6. We had no expenditures this month, but you do see we have one coming up in February of $6.8 million, and we have $10.9 in that account now, so we're good for that payment. 2024 bond, $256,000. $250,000 of that comes from SPOS 6. And again, we have a payment of 1.7 in February, and we have 1.8 in the account, in that account already. SPOS 5 account, we had revenue of $6,431, and we had expenditures of about $15,000. The majority of that money is earmarked for the Culinary Arts Edition. SPOS 6, we brought in 1.4 million this month, which is a really good revenue this month, and expenditures of $790,000. Any questions on the cash flow report? I'll start with the grants on the budget status report. Pretty sure as of December, all grants have been approved, so we should start being able to draw all grants down, starting in December. Our total grant expenditures for the year is $6,782,000, and we've been able to draw down $3.6 million at this point. Any questions about the grants? All right, so our general fund budget status report, we have brought in $5.5 million in local revenue. The majority of that is from taxes. Our QBE revenue is $18,969,548. As far as what the QBE revenue is for the year, we're about 25% through the school year and 42% through the fiscal year. But we start drawing that money in September, so we're on track at 25% of the year for most areas. And it says total revenue is at 26% at the bottom of the page. Then expenditures, we have spent $32 million, which is about 32%. And as of right now, the revenues have not caught up to the expenditures, but that is because we are behind in our tax, getting our taxes in. Normally, by this point, we've got about $20 million brought in by November. So I'm hoping, like I said, I got a $4.1 million yesterday, that we'll get another one next week, which should put us back where we're accustomed to being this time of year. Anything, any questions? Thank you.
At this time, Ms. Knowles.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, and Dr. Lockhart. The Facilities Committee met on December 4th at 12:30 here at the Board of Education. We had three items on that agenda, and first item was CM Proposal Review. At that meeting, we simply received the proposals in. We received three proposals for the new Board of Education office. Those proposals came from JCI Contractors, Coian Power Construction, and Winter Construction Company. And for the VHS additions, we received five proposals from JCI Contractors, Coian Power Construction, Winter Construction, Parish Construction, and CCH Construction. At that meeting, we decided to form an internal committee to review all the proposals. We scored them based on a score sheet that was provided to all the companies when they were putting together their proposals. And from there, we adjourned and went and scored the proposals separately. The committee consisted of four internal members. Item number two on that agenda, we reviewed the central office and stadium appraisal. That appraisal came in at a total, well, for the superintendent's office complex was $1.45 million, and for Bazemore Hyder Stadium was $23.5 million. Item number three, we reviewed the facilities use agreement and discussed adding the athletic fields to that agreement and the associated costs that go along with that. Also adding an appendix which listed out each field that we are able to run out as well. And that concluded the agenda, with a follow-up committee meeting being scheduled for December 16th here at the Board at 12:30. Any questions about that agenda?
I have a question. On the stadium appraisal, does that include this building as well?
It does. It was a total appraisal, but he broke it out into the office complex, the whole office complex, which came in at $1.45, and the stadium itself, which came in at $23.5. Anything else? Okay. The Facilities Committee met again on December 16th at 12:30 here at the Board Office. We had three items on that agenda as well, and we met to review the results from the proposal review. JCI Contractors had the highest ranking score for the new district office facility, and Parish Construction Company had the highest ranking score for the VHS building additions. Are the individual, are the score sheets attached to this?
They've received.
Okay, y'all have received them. Okay, so you can review. All right, so you guys can review those if you'd like to see how they ranked. Item number two, SL Mason HVAC replacement. An invitation to bid has been released for the HVAC replacement at SL Mason, scheduled to start this summer. We have listed it on the Georgia Procurement website, Valdosta City Schools website, and Altman &amp; Barrett websites. It will also run in the Valdosta Daily Times on December 12th, December 19th, December 26th, and January 2nd. We will open bids for that project here at the Valdosta Board of Education on January 9th at 2:00. This is an FY25 capital outlay project with an overall budget of $2.7 million and state reimbursement of $905,679. And Ms. Steely also joined us to review the current agreement with Black Crow Media. It's the desire of the Board to put out an RFP for broadcasting services with a two-year contract term. And that concluded that committee meeting. Any questions about that agenda? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that like a historical two-year contract? Is that the norm?
That's a normal contract term. Doesn't mean it can't be renewed, but just, you know, if the Board, if it's the wish of the Board to put it out for an RFP, then they can.
And again, we can adjust that contract term as you want us to place in RFP.
They do radio broadcasting, am I correct?
Yes, Ms. Steely, right.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, they offer all of the streaming services through their station, their family of stations. In addition to the broadcasts, they are willing to do a coaches show as well. We haven't done one in a few years. I think when COVID hit, that kind of hurt a little bit, and then we had some coaching changes, and that show just kind of never has come back. They are also willing to do other sports if needed. I know for baseball, it's been like region games that they would have agreed to do. I know in the past, they've done some playoff games for basketball as well. It's just finding the talent, the, what do, what do you call them? The talent, the people that, that's the word, the commentators. But there's a fee involved that we pay them, but then they also are willing to pay the commentator per, per game. But there's a fee involved that we pay them, but then they also are willing to pay the commentator per, per game. Now, I don't know the specifics. This was really my first kind, time really delving into the actual contract. It was always done by Dr. Hudson or the previous finance department. Um, but, um, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per regular season or postseason game for the football announcers. I'm not sure what that would look like for basketball or baseball or any other sport that they ask them to do. Um, but we do have copies of the contract. The one thing about Black Crow Media also is that they have the, they have a really large bandwidth. Um, that offers up an app, so wherever you are, anywhere, you can open up the app and listen to our announcers call our, our sporting event.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And if I could just add at the last, um, part of this is the Black Crow contract expires December thirty-first of this year, which is why it's a good time just to see if there's any, but with technology changing the way it is, there may be others who can provide, um, superior services. We're very happy with Black Crow. But again, just to do our due diligence, uh, we just say we'll, you know, open it up to see if there's anything else out there.
Any other questions?
Okay, next we have the facilities use agreement, um, as an action item tonight. Uh, Superintendent recommends the addition of the athletic fields and associated fees to the facilities use agreement. The rationale, Valdosta City Schools is receiving numerous requests for the use of our athletic fields. Therefore, we see the need to add this as an item on the agreement, and there's no funding source required.
So with this moving forward, if anyone, anybody want to use our facility, they, it will be a charge. Is that what we're saying?
For the fields, if they want to reserve a field for a specific day and time, then they would need to fill out a facilities use agreement. I think, you know, we can all tell that people will use our fields. Um, we really don't police that, and I think we're just all under the understanding that that is okay. But if you would like to reserve our fe- our fields to use for a specific date and time, and you're going to be charging people to come in for whatever the use is, a tournament per se, then a facilities use agreement would need to be signed.
So what I'm asking is, no one will be allowed to get on our campus and decide they want to have practice without being charged?
They should not. Correct?
Outside the grassy areas, so some of our properties have large grass areas that are not fenced in, they're not athletic, and teams, local, um, little league teams will practice on those. But as far, but they're listed on the, in the appendix with the baseball fields, softball fields, football fields, soccer track fields, those fields that are fenced and official ball fields is what, is what will need to be had the Supreme sign for.
Okay, 'cause I mean, I've now, I've passed by and seen people on the track at the high school practicing, and they are not from Valdosta High.
And those will, like little boys club, you're going, those kids are still?
No, these are not. These are high schoolers.
I just, that's where we, the locked facilities.
So that's what I'm just asking, if this is gonna force people to pay to use our facility?
It's, it's our attempt to try to see if we can get some more control and guardrails around just to protect the school system, um, from liability. And so this is our first step towards moving towards that. And hopefully, this will begin to, to straighten out the problem. But we might find ourselves having to revisit and revise as we just see things occur with it. But this is our first attempt to try to see if we can get some better controls, um, in, in the fields out there.
Also, Madam Chair, excuse me, whatever we do, let's just be fair. Let's just be fair with, with everybody. If we're gonna, um, charge for the use of the fields, just make a blanket, yes, we're gonna charge everybody for the use of the fields. Because I think that's where we can come into problems, that we're charging some and not charging others. Because that kind of thing, it gets around.
Yeah.
So let's be consistent and fair.
Do these, I mean, most of these fields are fenced. Are they not locked? Like, I mean, that might would have, um,
We will have to go and see, because I, I, right now, I couldn't just safely say that they all have that security measure around. So we do need to go and look into that particular piece. Uh, one thing that we're also doing that, what came up in the facilities committee meeting is about the, the security role. Okay, so what we're also looking at is trying to see how we can get it policed. So let's just say you drive by, you see this random group out there, and they haven't completed this form. So, so we need the support of law enforcement to enforce what we're putting in place here. So i- it's definitely going to be a process. Uh, and because again, first the awareness has to come out, and then trying to help people understand that this is how we like to govern our, our programs. So again, this is just, uh, step one of that process.
This is an action item? So I need a motion?
I know that we adopted facilities use agreement.
Same.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Also, as an action item on the agenda is the approval of the two construction management firms from the proposals that we received and scored. The Superintendent recommends JCI Contractors as the construction management firm for the new district office. And Parish Construction Company as the construction management firm for the VHS building additions. The rationale, Valdosta City Schools received three proposals from construction management firms for the new district office facility. And five proposals for the VHS building additions. An internal committee reviewed and scored the proposals. JCI had the highest ranking score out of all three firms for the new district office facility. And Parish Construction Company had the highest ranking score out of all five firms for the VHS building additions. The funding source for these projects will be a combination of bond funding and SPOS.
Okay, this is another action item. I need a motion, please.
So, same.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Brown.
Good evening, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Lockhart. The Teaching and Learning Committee met on December the fifth at twelve-thirty. Um, we had three items, um, on the agenda. Uh, the first agenda item was our end-of-grade retesting plan. Um, Dr. Joystein presented a draft plan for administering the end-of-grade retests in spring of twenty twenty-five. Um, the plan will be shared with the full Board for informational purposes during the December Board meeting. Um, the second item was our school calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, Ms. Jennifer Stately introduced a draft of the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar. The draft calendar will also be presented to the full Board for informational purposes at the December Board meeting. And then the third item is, um, attempt to apply for federal grants. Dr. Terry Lockhart provided an overview of two federal grant opportunities. Um, one is the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Grant. And the second one is Geared Up, which stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, grants. Um, information about these grant opportunities will be presented to the full Board at the December Board meeting. Um, there being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at one oh nine, uh, PM. Okay, second item that I'm covering tonight is the information regarding our end-of-grade, um, testing. Okay, um, so this falls under a strategic goal for student achievement recommendation. Um, the Superintendent recommends developing a spring twenty twenty-five end-of-grade retest plan, which includes a two-week targeted academic assistance program during the school day. Rationale, after reviewing the retest data from the spring twenty twenty-four end-of-grade test administration, we determined that a more targeted remediation plan is needed. Um, so students who score in grade three, who score a level one in reading, and students in grades five and eight who score a level one in reading and mathematics, must participate in a two-week targeted academic assistance program during the school day. Failure to participate in a two-week targeted academic assistance program during the school day may result in retention. Students who score a level one during the first and second administrations may be placed or retained based on a school-level placement committee decision. And so the handout that you have, um, the first part of this is just the Georgia law as far as promotion and retention. Now, our district is a strategic waiver, and so we have a waiver where we are not required to follow or retain our kids if they don't meet the requirement. Um, and so we looked at the results from last year, and so on page two, um, is an outline of our grade three, five, and eight reading. And so it's broken down by school, and so if, if, I'm looking at the grade three reading. Um, and so for a total of all of our third graders who tested, and you can see the individual schools listed, we tested a total of six hundred and twenty-nine students. Okay, um, the number that needed to retest that were at a level one were three hundred and thirty-six. Okay, the number of students who participated in the retest last spring was two hundred and ninety-one. The number of students who improved out of all the third graders in the district, we had forty-two students who moved from a level one and moved to level two or three. And so that left two hundred and forty-nine students who were at a level one for both the first and the second administration. And so these are the students, um, that we would fall into the category where they have to participate in the two-week, uh, remediation, and they may be placed or retained, uh, depending on the school-level placement committee decision. Um, the next page, page three, shows math. Now, last year's spring, we did not test math because the standards were new. And so the test results came back, um, after the school year had ended. And so this upcoming year, uh, math retests will be offered. And so that would affect grade three, excuse me, grade five and grade eight for math. And so the numbers here is just a projection of the students who would have qualified for a retest in math. Um, and so you can see grade five, we had a total of five hundred and thirty-nine students who tested. Two hundred and forty-two were at a level one, qualified for retesting, and so that's forty-four point nine percent of the students. Um, and then for grade eight, we tested five hundred and eighty-six students. One hundred and eighty qualified for a retest, which is about thirty percent of our students. And so our plan is in draft. Um, we're having conversations with, uh, principals and other school personnel to decide the best route to take, um, to make sure that our students receive targeted instruction based on the results that they have from the first test in order to hopefully prepare them so they can improve their level of, of achievement the second administration. Questions?
Is that like really being realistic if a child didn't get it the whole year, but they're gonna get it in two weeks?
So, um, that was part of our conversation as well. Um, we've thrown out some different ideas as far as that two-week timeframe. But the two-week timeframe is there is, is because if we want to do this prior to the school year ending. So based on the time that the students take the test, we can only administer, um, end-of-grade twenty-five days from the last day of school. That's the law. You can, you can't be administered any earlier than that. And so by the time we administer the assessment, get the scores back to know who needs to retest, we're, we're out, pretty much at the end of the school year. And so we, there would probably be about two weeks left unless we wanted to extend it into the summer. And those are some discussions that we're having as well.
If I may add, um, to Ms. Howard's question, and, and for the public, that's why we're having this conversation right now at the end of the first semester. Uh, with your blessing with us to move forward, we want to really talk with the parents and the, and the families in January. Because if people know in January, we do have enough time for them to, to do their very best the first time out, so that they don't even have to think about a retest. But, but what we're trying to do is raise awareness and let our students, um, families, and our faculty and staff know that we're, we're serious about this. So hopefully, by pushing it out, by having this conversation today and moving forward, we can let them know that we, that we expect, um, greatness out of them.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Stately?
Alright, good evening again. I do have a copy, a hard copy of this for you guys as well. Okay, and I'll grab mine out of there. So tonight, I'm presenting to you the draft copy of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar. Um, I'll read through the rationale. Um, the calendar has the required one hundred and ninety staff and one hundred and eighty student days, while also keeping the five-day fall break, five-day Thanksgiving break, nine-day holiday break in December, January, and a five-day spring break. There are other holidays in there as well, one day, um, MLK, a couple of others. Two early release days have been planned for parent-teacher conferences, one in the first semester on Friday, September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five, and one in the second semester, Friday, March twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-six. Additionally, we've added a disclaimer alerting families that school holidays are subject to change if we have unexpected or unplanned closures as we've, as we have had in the recent years. If we have in excess of ten days prior to October third, we will take away the Monday through the Wednesday of that fall break, leaving the Thursday and Friday. If we accumulated more than ten days prior to the winter break in February, we will coop that school, a school day by taking the teacher in-service day, um, and making that a regular school day for students. So it really wouldn't impact the teachers as they would have been here anyway, but the students would lose that holiday. So, um, couple of things, um, I just did want to highlight, the last day of school would be the twenty-second. First day of school is August first, um, with pre-planning that last full week of July. And, um, it pretty much mirrors this year's calendar. With the exception of having, uh, three days of post-planning at the end versus, um, having to. Are there any questions?
Usually run this by teachers and stuff like that to make sure that
Yes.
and coordinate with some of the other districts in the area.
I have looked at their schedule, um, it pretty much mirrors. The only thing that is different is they do not offer a five-day fall break. They have that Monday and Tuesday of that week in October, and what we did is we did look at the football schedule so that that fall break, um, would still be that Thursday and Friday because that is the open weekend. And that way, our band, cheerleaders, football team, they, they get that holiday one way or the other. Um, even if we, Lord bless, we hope we don't have any more hurricanes or anything like that. Um, but if we had to take any days back, we still would have that Thursday and Friday. So that would be the only real difference, and then like I said, the first day of school, but the end of school is the same. Spring breaks, everything else matches.
We will, uh, be sharing this with various stakeholder groups because we do need to get some more feedback before we bring this back before the Board for action. We would, this is the first stop, wanting you to see it first. And then, and it's a draft, so, so subject to change. Uh, I would want to just stress the fact, we see a need for parent-teacher conference time to be, uh, we see a need for a parent-teacher conference time to be firmly built in, and so, that way, that we have that dedicated structured time for parents and teachers to be able to connect and talk about their students so that everybody's successful.
Any questions?
Thank you much.
All right, thank you, guys.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lockhart.
Greetings, Madam Chair, School Board, and Superintendent Lockhart. The superintendent recommends the exploration of federal funding for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant and the Gear Up Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs grant. The rationale, and you have a copy in front of you. The rationale is the purpose of this memorandum is to inform the teaching and learning, I'm sorry, to inform the board of the school system's intent to explore the applications for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant and the Gear Up Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs grant. So, to tell you a little bit about the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant, the purpose of this grant is to provide supplemental academic enrichment opportunities for the students about Austin City Schools. Our students would be offered homework assistance, individualized instruction, summer camp programming, programming geared to the arts, music, financial literacy, sciences, and a broad array of enrichment and career pathway opportunities. In addition, families are provided opportunities for active and meaningful engagement in their children's education. Implementation of the Twenty-First Century Grant aligns with our district's strategic goal for increased student achievement, supporting tier-one instruction as well as providing opportunities to support the whole town. Gear Up. The primary goal of the Gear Up grant is to increase the high school graduation rate and enrollment in post-secondary education. This is a competitive seven-year grant, which provides early intervention and support services to cohort students beginning in middle school. As a partnership grant, Gear Up will assist the district with increasing community partnerships as well as positively impacting the local economy overall. How does Gear Up work? Affendants identify entire cohorts of sixth and seventh-grade students enrolled in low-income students. Those that qualify will qualify through free and reduced lunch rates to be served. Services include a suite of academic, social, and planning support as students progress from the middle grades through high school graduation and into that first year of college. Drawn upon research, Gear Up engages students early, accelerates their readiness through supplemental programs, and expands the capacity of schools to create college-going cultures. There are two grant types. One focuses on states, I'm sorry, states and the other on local partnerships to ensure both breadth and depth. If approved, to move forward, Vado City Schools will apply for the local partnership grant. If given the opportunity to apply and awarded, the program sites will be J.L. Newberg Middle School and Vado Austin Middle School. And Twenty-First Century Learning Community and the Gear Up Grant, if awarded, would be the funding source. Are there any questions?
So, if we are awarded, we'll just start next school term?
Yes.
So, again, the purpose in bringing this all to you, these are multi-million-dollar grants. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be put into place. We would like to apply. Again, we do have partners with Twenty-First Century. Our goal is not to compete with those partners. I want to be very clear. There are many students that could utilize this service across our school system. So, again, we will work that out. However, our goal is to notify the board to make sure that we have your blessing to move forward. It's not an action item, not this evening, but we want you to be aware of what we're trying to do behind the scenes.
And thank you so much. All right, Ms. Everidge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Lockhart. This is the recommendation tonight. The superintendent recommends that we enter into a partnership with benefits consulting service Totem Solutions to enhance the management and delivery of our employee benefits program. You have that rationale there in front of you that lists out the process that we follow. Partnering with Totem Solutions will enhance our ability to audit our benefits program, and will ensure that employees receive the highest quality of products and services at the very best prices. I think we all heard those percentages that Dr. Dean mentioned earlier. There is very little more critical in our district than to recruit and retain really high-quality teachers, and this is a really good way for us to do that. Give us a competitive edge against our partners or neighbors throughout our community. Following the RFP process and timeline presented to the board on August twenty-seventh, we thoroughly evaluated seven proposals using a structured review process and standardized rubric. The field was narrowed to three finalists, and we expanded our review team for that to include representatives from all sectors of our organization, and they each presented their information about their program. They each had thirty minutes. We recommend moving forward with that firm that achieved the highest overall score, and that was Totem. I will also tell you that within our group and our expanded committee, we included one of those Bissue interns that Dr. Slakice mentioned earlier, and she was very insightful as to what the, these young twenty-year-olds who are coming into the workforce, what they're looking for in support. They don't want to talk to anyone, we found. They want to have text messages and very quick responses, and Totem had much of that already in place. That was good for us to hear that. So, I've compiled a list of several bulleted items that were above and beyond what the others offered that I'd share with you if you all would like to hear those tonight. If you have additional, need additional information.
This is an action item.
So, you got bullet points of what?
Of what made them, why we liked them best, what, how they stood out against the others, some other things they'll be able to provide for us. They have a very robust onsite support program, and the representatives that they brought with them had each served in an HR capacity within a school district in Georgia in a previous career. So, their billing department, their frontline that will be answering questions about services, they have all done that before in their school districts. And so, that made us feel very comfortable that we spoke the same language and they knew the needs of our staff members. They brought a customer service manager that they are hoping to assign to our district, who was incredibly friendly because that was very important to us. And they are also able to include for us a total compensation package sheet for each of our staff members. I came back from a conference and asked Lockhart if we could buy that for our staff this year, and I had not, I did not have the money in the budget for that. They will include that for free for us, and districts use that mid-year when we are talking about letters of intent. Many of our teachers don't understand beyond their salary exactly how much they make in a year when you factor in all their benefits. So, they will help us put together those for recruitment purposes for our staff. They will also help us generate and distribute those, and very importantly, without paid notifications when staff members have used all of their sick time. They will assist us with FMLA and our PPL and track questions to identify training needs through their call center so that we can provide that important support for our staff members at the school level. We were very impressed.
If I may, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, Ms. Everidge's team has done their due diligence. You first heard about this whole concept. I believe we were at the PLC, we had a board meeting there. So, that's how long it's been that she's been working to put this process together. Basically, this will allow for us, it's almost like we'll have another staff member, but it'll be free of cost to the district, which thus allows for us to have our other staff members do other things that would therefore support our employees, and it'll make things a lot smoother for everyone if we were able to approve this brokerage firm.
This is an action item, they have a motion?
Some of?
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, this time, Ms. Blint. And please make note that this is an action item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Dr. Lockhart.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm seeking the approval for a learning trip to Orlando, Florida for Lomax's gifted junior beta students, leaving out on May the second and returning on May the third. Okay, we would like to go to Wonder Works, which is a science-focused indoor amusement park with over one hundred hands-on exhibits. And SeaWorld, the students will get to explore, discover, wander, and receive education about the different animals at SeaWorld. They will meet with the animal experts, which, who will provide them with standards-based interactive activities. Okay, and these are the standards that will be covered, various science standards as well as ELA standards. And this is an opportunity for the students to have those real-world connections and basically make those connections between school and the real world. Because a lot of times, they wonder like, you know, where will I use this? Where will I use this? So, they get to see that they'll actually be able to use it. So, they'll get to learn more about the weather, plants, animals, and humans, and how they cause changes to the environment. They'll also get to learn about the surface features on the earth. They'll get to learn about life cycles, the effects of pollution, various physical science such as force and the relationship between the different forces at Wonder Works. And then, they'll also get to learn about various earth and space science standards, the position of the earth, the moon, and the stars. And then, for ELA, they'll get to do or learn more or actually put into action various ELA standards, language, speaking, and those listening skills. Because they'll get to ask and answer questions from the experts who know, you know, more about the animals and various things. The projected cost for the thirty-suites and three chaperones is nine thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cent, and I have to have one adult for every ten students. The cost will be covered by fundraisers and parents. The projected cost for the students is two hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-four cent. The chaperones will also pay, they'll have to pay two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cent for Wonder Works, SeaWorld, and the charter bus. Okay, the cost of the SeaWorld tickets, it includes the sleepover program, pizza dinner in the evening, breakfast the next morning, and their SeaWorld Park entry pass the next day. And Wonder Works includes all of the Wonder Works exhibits, glow-in-the-dark, rope course, 4D motion ride, and laser tag. And we plan to get a charter bus to take us there and return us back.
This is an action item? Any motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Stroger.
No. It is Mr. Stroger, however. I am Dr. Augustin, standing in his place. I know, I know so. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, and Superintendent Dr. Lockhart. As you know, I am not Mr. Stroger today. He welcomed a bouncing baby girl, that's why he's not here. And so, he wanted, I'm coming on behalf of Esau Mason. November the sixth, we did present our fifth-grade end-of-year trip. And on that trip or in that presentation, we had more or less an outline. It's a two-day trip, one night, to the wonderful place Disney, where the magic begins. And sometimes, the magic ends, but it stays with you, right? The goal was to bring students to Disney, not just to have fun, but to also experience the world of STEM. And so, in that, they would go through, day one, if you remember, the students would go through landing into Magic Kingdom, not Magic Kingdom, I'm sorry. Day one, May thirteenth, they would leave Esau Mason Elementary, take the journey to Orlando, Florida, and they would go into Magic Kingdom first. All costs and everything includes hotel, food, as well as a ticket into Magic Kingdom. That evening, they would check in, make their way to the hotel room. We will also have onsite security, and then, from there, day two. It is in day two that they will actually experience Disney Imagination Campus, led by none other than Disney's instructors, where they have the information, where the students will not only learn how to build roller coasters, but it also includes a lot of math, science, English, as well as social studies. The goal was to come today to find out what the board's decision was, because when we did meet on November the sixth, we was hoping to come and hear the approval for our trip. And so, I could go on and discuss all of what we said prior to, but the purpose today was to find out, was this amazing trip approved or not?
You'll find out in a few minutes.
So, this is an action item. Madam Chair, I move it with Esau Mason, it's great field trip. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, thank you both for your passion and your dedication for both schools. We appreciate y'all's dedication.
At this time, Mr. Williams.
Evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Lockhart, board members. I'm Timothy Williams, esteemed teacher at Vado Austin Early College Academy, as well as the TSA advisor. I stand before you tonight to share information and request permission to attend the Georgia TSA State Conference. This conference will be held in March of twenty twenty-five, dates March twelfth through the fifteenth. I'm requesting to take three students, as well as a chaperone. I chose to be choosing three students because we are a new chapter, so this will be our first time going out. So, as an advisor, I don't want to be overwhelmed. So, I'm going to be choosing my top three students to try to attend this conference. So, the field trip not only falls under our strategic goals of student achievement and positive culture and climate, but the students get to compete against other middle schools across the state of Georgia in the areas of esteem. And so, my students, I would want them to focus on the engineering challenge because they're more familiar with that, because that's what we do on a daily basis in the classroom. So, I want them to be comfortable to be able to compete and be very competitive. A few logistics for transportation. There will be a parental consent form that students will have to get signed by their parents or guardians to be transported by myself and the chaperone to the state conference. Meals, the registration fee covers meals, lunch for that Thursday. All other additional meals, breakfast, lunch, dinner, will be the responsibility of the chapter. So, students will have to take care of that. For supervision, students attending will be supervised by myself as well as the chaperone. And the chaperone that I'm targeting is a recently retired VCS employee that worked many years over at Vecum. Also, parents have the opportunity to attend this event if they pay the registration fees, so parents are welcome to attend as well. For medical access, the TSA organization, they require students to have personal liability forms, medical release, as well as photography release forms on record during registration. So, when they register, all of that will be on record. A daily schedule of events, I checked the website today, and they still are posting, have posted that January twenty-eighth will be the day that they'll release the day-to-day schedule of events for the conference. And that schedule should include dates and time of the competitive events and rooms and location and so forth. The registration The registration opens for the conference on January the first and it closes on February the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. So from January the first to the fourteenth of February is the registration window for the conference. And after that, they charge late fees for you to register. My expectations for the students are for them to go and compete and as well as to be able to observe and network with other middle schoolers across the state of Georgia. Like I said, this will be our first time attending a conference such as this because we are a new chapter, but we're willing to go and compete and hopefully bring back some hardware. Are there any questions?
This sounds exciting. Any questions for Mr. Williams or for me?
Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'm turning over to Dr. Lockhart.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have superintendents monthly report for November twenty twenty-four. Just a few items, just to share with the board and with the community. With our transportation fleet, just for trivial knowledge, we have sixty-seven buses in our fleet, and that means that we have ten spares. We currently have a total of fifty-seven routes. The regular routes, we have forty-eight regular routes, special education. We have nine regular, nine routes for that. The average number of students transported daily is three thousand ninety-four students across our school system. I do want to share with you some November enrollment information, and these are students that have enrolled in our school system just within the month of November alone. Across the district, we enrolled a hundred and forty-three brand-new students. In our SESSI program, thirteen students entered, six entered in discovery. Sixty-one students classified as unhoused or homeless entered into our school system in the month of November. Now for a total of three hundred and eight students that are homeless. And so those type of statistics are important for our school system to be aware of as we're sensitive to the needs of all of our children and their families so that we can make sure we provide the best support for them. The last thing I just wanted to draw out was our November student attendance percentages. The goal is to have ninety-five percent each month. And right now, elementary ninety-three percent, middle school ninety-one percent, high school eighty-eight percent. So we do have some targets that we're trying to meet. So again, those are the things I want to share from the report. It's always full of rich information. If there are questions or things you want us to look into, please let me know and I'd be happy to investigate.
Questions or comments for Dr. Lockhart? Do we have any public participation? Alright, at this time, now the motion to adjourn to join the executive session to discuss personnel, pending litigation and real estate. All in favor? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call back to order the Valdosta Board Education regular meeting. At this time, I'll turn over to Dr. Lockhart.
Yes, Madam Chair, Superintendent Superintendent recommends the personnel recommendations that were brought forth during executive sessions for action.
May I have a motion?
I believe we accept the superintendent's recommendations.
Any discussion? All in favor? At this time, do we have any local government team comments?
Madam Chair, I have two. You know, my first, just like to recognize the school board. We have here our, well, your exemplary award that you received from the Georgia School Boards Association. This is a physical manifestation of the work that y'all do. I've taught them to know what's gonna build us a little shelf, and we're gonna start collecting these because this is the work that we're gonna continue doing. I just want to thank y'all for doing the right work on behalf of the students and community of Valdosta City Schools. The second thing I'd like to say is this is Ms. Howard's last official meeting as our board chair, and just want, and from me, I want to thank you for all of the leadership, support, and service you provided me, that you provided the board, and it's been a great experience working alongside you, and we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Is that our first one?
I think this is the first maybe in a while. First exemplary. We've done, we've received quality before. Yeah, so, yeah, first exemplary.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to say I was contacted on my way driving in, like I drove in from a long way, but anyway. Newbury Middle School is in need of $25 gift cards. I'm so sorry some of our people had to leave, but if you, 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 you have $25 gift card, they want them for the cadets. The cadets have done a wonderful job, and they'd like to reward them for the holiday. So certainly, you don't have to give it to me, you can just take it to Newbury, but a $25 gift card, Walmart gift card, in fact, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you're on the upcoming strategic planning committee, if you can look at your calendars for January the 31st at 12:30. The staff's been working on putting the vision together with Dr. Lockhart being here, and we'd like to do some work on that. That'll be a crunch y'all heard.
Any more other comments? Reminders for board members, Valdosta City School will be closed for winter holiday break on December the 23rd through January the 3rd. Students will return on January the 8th. The next board meeting will be held on January 14th, 2025, and will be held at the Valdosta Board Education. Meeting will begin at 6:00 P.M. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned.